Vice Chairman Anna Klimas is a member. We have two items on the agenda tonight. We'll go with the first item is a variance request for 1998 South Street coming before us. We had approved a variance of, it was around three feet before frontage, but apparently the lot tapers in at one point, so the 50, 150 doesn't carry through well.
Correct. We were asking also, but its communication didn't work out. We also need a front setback. We put it on the plan, but it didn't make it to the application. So we are also asking for 9.7 feet at the front setback, a variance of 9.7 feet at the front setback.
Why are we looking for a front setback?
Because it's a footnote in your zoning bylaws that requires 150 feet at the front setback, in this case, 40 feet back from.
Oh, so it, okay.
Correct. So because all the lots taper in, we can provide 150, 150, and then we're nine feet short for the 150.
It's the one lot that.
It's still just the one lot.
Right, okay.
And I did revise the plan to show the access easement that we discussed from last time, so that now it's memorialized. X-ray vision.
So, Rebecca, just so I understand, the front setback.
Can you bring it up?
It kind of just goes for the, you know, you're still, it'll be the same setback, but it's because of the distance for the kick in there.
Correct.
Right. Right. And it still meets all the side setbacks over here.
You know what the exact number is there at the setback, Rebecca? 140.28, okay. What was the other?
Or just the?
Just, because they're going again. Okay, move the first one again, what are the numbers? One, oh, okay.
Jen?
Yes.
We granted a, the 2.59 feet frontage.
Yes.
Do we have to rescind that original and then just go forward, the two that we're looking for being the?
I mean, you could, you know, I don't think you have to. I think you could add, you can just grant an additional variance on top of what you've already granted. You could rescind and then just grant a new variance for the two. You could amend your existing, I think you could do any of the number of the three. The easiest is probably just to grant an additional variance if that's the board's choosing.
Yeah, I think that's the easiest thing to do.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions?
Reminder, it is a public hearing too.
Yep. Do any additional questions for Rebecca?
No, I'm fine.
Yeah. Do we have anybody in the audience that has any comments? As this is still, as it says, it's a public, so the public comment section is still open. Take the silence as a no.
Nicole, you're muted.
Yeah, I couldn't hear you, Nicole.
Sorry, can you see if anyone has raised their hand? Because I'm sharing my screen, it kind of, I can't see that.
There's no hands raising. I don't have anybody in my chat. I don't know if you have anybody in your chat, Nicole.
Okay. So if there's nobody out there to make any comments, I'd request a motion to close the public comment section.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Would either of the members care to make a motion on the variance request before us for 9.72 fronted, uh, front setback?
Sure, I'll make a motion to allow the 9.72 additional frontage setback for 1998 South Street.
Second. All in favor? Hi. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Turn up.
Have a good night.
Just remind everybody to try to speak close to the mics because you're really soft.
Just pull it right near you. I tried to kind of put them right there, but yeah, bring them in.
Okay, the second item on the agenda is an appeal of the building inspector's decision in relation to 85 Plymouth Street, also known as dwell 85.
Good evening. My name is Jason Pitti. I'm an attorney and I represent the owner of dwell 85, the Applebee, with regard to the violation notice. Here with me tonight to speak on behalf of our appeal to the zoning board of appeals are Jeff Engler, one of the owners of SLV Bridgewater, as well as Stephanie Kiefer, counsel to the owner both presently and during the comprehensive permit process for this property. The reason that we are here tonight is to appeal the cease and desist letter issued by Stephen Solari dated June 16, 2021. Our appeal has been briefed at length in my letter to the town of Bridgewater dated July 14, 2021, which I assume you all have. For the reasons stated in the appeal letter and further expounded upon this evening, Mr. Solari's violation notice is improper and should be overturned by the town of Bridgewater zoning board of appeals. Mr. Engler will speak first to address and explain the permitting process. Ms. Kiefer will be available thereafter to address any legal questions on the permitting process. And then finally, I will address why the lodging house bylaw that Mr. Solari bases the cease and desist letter upon does not apply to this particular property. Without any further ado, Jeff Engler.
Thank you, Jason, members of the board. Good to see you again. For the record, my name is Jeff Engler and I'm part owner of SLV Bridgewater PO, which is the owner of dwell 85 and the named entity in Mr. Solari's June 16 notice. Some of you are aware that I've been involved in this project since its inception. I appeared before this very board during the entirety of the public hearing process in 2018, when this development was originally approved, and I've long and deep history with the Bridgewater zoning board of appeals. I, along with a few other board members, can speak specifically about that public hearing process with firsthand recollections as we were involved in the original permitting process and personally engaged in those discussions. During the 40B public hearings in July and August of 2018, the issue relative to occupancy and multiple tenants was discussed at length with the board. The board's 40B consultant, Ed Marshand, was actively engaged in these discussions with us, and Mr. Marshand and the board collectively were representing the interests of the town. We were extremely transparent and made it clear that it was our expectation that future residents of the proposed project could include students attending nearby Bridgewater State. There is a huge shortage of modern housing for Bridgewater State students, and our development platform incorporated that likely tenant base with respect to the market units. As such, if you recall, we were asked during those 40B public hearings to submit a written lease clause, which was reviewed and approved by the board and became part of the public record. The lease clause clearly indicated that we were going to allow two unrelated people to share a bedroom if they so desired. We were clear about our intentions. In addition, we were asked to submit a representative lease for the record, which further confirmed that multiple unrelated people could be occupying and sharing an apartment. No concerns were raised by the board during these discussions, and no condition was ever included in the decision limiting our occupancy. Moving forward, when we fully took over the development from the original applicant entity, we retained a new architect to design a better building and a building more consistent with our vision for this development. On July 15, 2019, we submitted a full plan set to this board as part of a notice of insubstantial change of the comp permit to the board. This updated plan set was reviewed and approved by the ZBA and became the plan set of record. I am circulating a table that was included in that submitted plan set, which clearly shows the number of bedrooms as well as the number of possible beds. The total number of units did not change and was consistent with what was originally permitted. Once again, the board nor the building inspector raised any concerns or objectives, objections to these plans. None. This plan set was approved and became the plan set of record. This same plan set was the basis for our building permit application to the inspections department. Once again, no concerns were raised from any municipal departments, and the building inspector obviously issued a building permit for this project based on the same plan set approved by the ZBA, the plan of record for the 40B decision. It was only when we were several months away from receiving a certificate of occupancy and almost a full year into construction where we informed of concerns from the inspections department. Concerns that were a giant surprise to us considering all the submittals and municipal boards and, and department approvals that had occurred previous to that notification. Many, many different interim inspections were performed and approved by the inspections department with no mention of the occupancy issue. In Mr. Solari's letter, he asserts the building does not comply with the Bridgewater's lodging house bylaw. This building is not a lodging house. It's a multifamily apartment building. A waiver was never requested, nor is it necessary, as that bylaw does not apply to our development. We are not a lodging house and never have been a lodging house. Jason Pitti, who you just met, will expand upon our position and how the Bridgewater bylaw simply does not apply. Lastly, the table I previously circulated shows the number of beds that the ZBA approved as part of the comprehensive permit. I would like to now distribute the certificate of occupancy that Mr. Solari recently issued. This certificate of occupancy shows the maximum number of allowable occupants in the building. The CEO provides that the occupancy limits for the floors are as follows. First floor, 125, second floor, 88, third floor, 88, and fourth floor, 88. This zoning board approved 222 beds, and this certificate of occupancy, which was issued, allows 389 occupants. So our estimated occupancy is only about 57% of what is allowed under the certificate of occupancy approved by inspectional services. So to conclude my remarks, we've been candidly quite surprised and obviously a little disappointed with the inspection services' position on our development. During the entirety of the 40B public hearing process, as well as our post-permitting interactions with various municipal departments, we believe we've represented ourselves in a professional manner and responded to an extensive list of requests issued by various departments. We've been warmly received by the BSU community and have a lot of people excited to live at dwell 85s. Borough Ave and much of our surrounding neighborhood feature neglected two and three family houses, many with substandard living conditions, and most of which feature many unrelated people within the same structure. Yet for some reason, we believe we're being singled out merely because we are providing a superior living experience not available anywhere or close to the BSU campus. This development not only provides the town with 15 units of much-needed housing for low and moderate income persons, but it also provides significant tax revenue to this community. And we're still hopeful and optimistic that our relationship with the town, the university, and others can be collaborative, cooperative, and positive. So I'll turn it over to my legal counsel, Mr. Pitti, just to expand upon a couple of the topics that I introduced. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. I hate to do it, but as a lawyer, sometimes you have to point out some of the technicalities. But there's one technical issue associated with Mr. Solari's violation notice or the cease and desist letter, and that is that the timing, it was not appropriate. Essentially, we submit that Mr. Solari jumped the gun on the issuance of the letter. When the letter was issued, we had no certificate of occupancy. No one was living in any of the apartments. And in fact, no one is living in the apartments as I stand before you today. As you are all well aware, the lodging house bylaw says whoever shall let, and we are not currently letting, we will be, but we are not currently. So issuing a cease and desist before occupancy actually commences is not proper. Accordingly, it's not technically accurate to issue it at this point in time. And again, although this is a technical distinction, it needs to be addressed because if this appeal is denied, we will have no alternative but to proceed to the Superior Courts of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in order to seek redress of the board's decision here today and Mr. Solari's violation notice. We just simply have no other alternative because this is how this project was always permitted and always going to be. The model simply just doesn't work if all of a sudden we can no longer rent our two- and three-bedroom apartments to more than, to only less than four or more unrelated persons of, not within the second degree of kindred. As far as the lodging house distinction, as Mr. Engler indicated, dwell 85 is not a lodging house. It, this is a multifamily apartment building where all of the occupants will be lesses. They will all be tenants, they will not be lodgers. Dwell 85 is a multifamily apartment building that has been permitted with double occupancy in all of the bedrooms. This very issue has been addressed by the courts here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Specifically, the, the major case that exists on this issue of what is a lodging house and what is not a lodging house is the matter of City of Worcester versus College Hill Properties. It's a case that was decided by the Supreme Judicial Court, and it's cited in my brief. In that case, the Supreme Court of Massachusetts held that the key distinction between a lodger and a tenant has been historically defined based on their differing legal interests in the property that they occupy. This distinction is that a tenant has legal, exclusive legal rights to occupy and use the entirety of a property. And all of the rooms in an apartment are not rooms in the house of another. They are an apartment. A lodger, on the other hand, only occupies a specific room or rooms within a house or apartment. Look no further than lodging house bylaw when you read about the restrictions that are placed upon lodging houses, having lists of the particular occupants always available at the lodging house to then, to understand this distinction. When the owner, or where the owner or someone leasing from the owner is the primary occupant of the property, that is a lodging house. That is where someone, I own a home, I rent out a room or rooms to people, that's a lodging house. That's not what's going on here. In the dwell 85 property, the tenants that will be occupying as early as August 15th will be signing 12-month leases. They'll have an interest in the entirety of their apartment, not just a room, and they will have access to all of the unit and the accoutrement that exists in the unit, such as the kitchen, the bathrooms, the living rooms, common areas. Mr. Solari's position, and if the ZBA were to enforce it, will result in selective and inconsistent enforcement of the town zoning bylaws. The reason why is this. Dwell 85 is not just the two and three bedroom units. It also has one-bedroom units. There are in fact 11 one-bedroom units. And under no reading of the town zoning bylaw, could we ever have one of our one-bedroom units be classified as a quote lodging house. In addition, dwell 85 also has 15 affordable units pursuant to the 40B permit that was obtained. All of those affordable units are under the control of the subsidizing agency, not the town. We submit that Mr. Solari cannot take the position that some of the units are subject to the lodging house restrictions and some are appropriate apartments. That results in selective enforcement. Following this rationale will result in absurd results, and that's exactly what the city, the Supreme Judicial Court in the City of Worcester versus College Hill Properties case talked about. I would direct the, the board's attention to the lodging house bylaw definition itself. According to the bylaw, the lodging house restriction says a house or dwelling unit, or is, a lodging house is, a house or dwelling unit where lodgings are let to four or more persons, not within the second degree of kindred, to the legal owner of the premises. And, and that's a key word, who do not fall within the definition of family as defined in these bylaws. Family in the bylaws is defined as a group of persons related to each other by marriage or by blood, living together under a single roof and comprising the household, a household, the head of which is usually the father, husband, the mother, or the wife. That's what the zoning bylaw restriction relates to. Now, if we read that, how it reads, if I were to own a four-bedroom house in the town of Bridgewater, and I were to rent it to four unrelated persons by the read that Mr. Solari has interpreted the statute of the bylaw, that would mean I would be operating a lodging house. If I were to own a four-bedroom house and I were to rent it to four siblings, four people that are within the second degree of kindred to one another, I would be violating the lodging house bylaw because I have no relation to those four people. If I were to rent the house to an unmarried couple and their two adopted children, that would be a violation of the lodging house bylaw. If I were to rent that house that I own to two unmarried couples, that would be a violation of the zoning house bylaw. Quite frankly, we submit that that's not what this board wants to, that's not the situation it wants to get into, and that's not what we should be enforcing. As the Supreme Judicial Court said in the City of Worcester versus College Hill Properties case, "We must read and construe bylaws reasonably and not interpret them to create absurd results." Under no legal interpretation is dwell 85 a lodging house. It is a multifamily apartment building, and that is it. Finally, the certificate of occupancy has been issued for this property. As I just mentioned moments ago, tenants are moving in in less than a week. Leases are being signed as we speak. And any delay in dwell 85, operating as a permitted and approved multifamily apartment building will be catastrophic to this project, its owners, and the tenants that we have signed leases with. The financial harm and damages to my client and to these folks is massive. It could be massive. For those reasons that I stated, as well as what Mr. Engler stated, and I don't even believe that you have to get to my portion of the argument, I think you can make your decision simply based upon what Mr. Engler has stated. Mr. Solari's violation notice must be overturned, and we respectfully request that the zoning board of appeals grant my client's appeal. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is that the last of the presentation?
That's it for us, yes.
All right, so I have some general questions and, and a statement. I was on the board when this came through. I don't agree with Mr. Engler's full recollection. I do understand him, and we did look at the, passed it out in the wordage, and, and it said, hey, there could be two unrelated people. And at the time, my memory serves me as saying, well, that's fine, but you still can't rent it to more than, you know, three unrelated people. Because that was a major issue when it came before the board with, with all the surrounding people in the, in the neighborhood. So his recollection and mine are, are a little off in regards to the leases right now. So can you explain the leases to us? I mean, how, how are they, is, is every, every tenant individual? Is it, is it a group? As if, if, if you rent it to four people, like a two-bedroom, is one of them, say the other three take off, is that one guy on the hook?
No, they all have individual leases.
So they all have individual leases and all, they're not jointly and separately liable?
No.
Correct.
Since it's rented for August, you have one that you've actually used?
We have copies, yeah. I don't have them with me here tonight. Our, our property management company that's handling the, the lease up would have those.
So you said that, that each of the, the renters would sign their own lease, and they would have access to the common area, correct? And each of their own units, though, do they have access to each other's bedrooms and other, each other's units?
Yes, they have access to the entirety of the unit.
But are there locks and keys so that if you didn't want your roommates to come in and out?
How many, how many of these units have been actually rented to families?
To families?
Yeah.
By families, you mean like?
Like a, a traditional family, you know? I don't, mother, father, kids.
No, could you come up to the microphone?
Yeah, because people just.
I couldn't say that definitively. I will say a few of our affordable units are families, but the majority of the leases and interested residents have been young professionals and students, which is what we always anticipated.
So, so, so young professionals, then, but are they in the affordable units?
No, market units or affordable units, both.
No, no, but the 25% that's set aside.
The 25% that are affordables are governed by the state and mass housing, who's the program administrator, those are, those are, you know, under that, and those are rented to a single household.
So, but you as, or whoever your leasing company, I mean, the state doesn't, they give you the, the terms under which they qualify, but you guys are the ones who do the?
No, not, no, 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 not for the affordable units, we're not. It's a very, it's a very controlled process, and all of our documentation has to be reviewed and approved by mass housing relative to the 15 affordable units. So we, we don't, we don't, the, the only thing that we determine relative to the affordable units is, you know, are they, I mean, we have an entity that confirms they're programmatically eligible in accordance with mass housing regulations. And then we also have the right to make sure that they have adequate income to, you know, pay their, their monthly rent, albeit a reduced rent. But if they had no income, you know, well, first of all, they wouldn't make it through the screening process, but we put them through a screening process the same way the market rate tenants go through screening process.
So I'm a little confused. So I, I took you, your initial statement is to say that, well, the state actually does all that screening.
No, the state does the approval of all our documentation. Then we hire a third party that reviews the applicants to make sure that they're programmatically eligible with all the terms in the regulatory agreement, which this town reviewed, which we're a party to, and which mass housing is a party to. So we have to always make sure that we're in compliance with those requirements.
Okay, and are, just generally, are those all rented out as well?
Uh, no, we only have five of 15 leases currently.
So it's, I just want to get it in. So basically, it's, it's your premise that you guys came before us and, and got this approved, that to your recollection, nobody ever brought up the whole issue of the bylaw for the town and renting to more than three people of the same. the bylaw for the town and renting to more than three people of the same.
I, I wouldn't go so far as to say that. Clearly, it was brought up because we discussed it over two public hearings, and that was the genesis for the lease clause that we were asked to produce, which we submitted to the record. I would also say that the board had every opportunity, if it was concerned about, um, you know, the number of occupants or being consistent with the lodging house bylaw, to put something in the permit, which we did not, and
Why? And would we have to do that?
Well.
That's just, that's a bylaw of the town. You don't, you don't get a waiver of that?
Correct, and we did, we did not ask for a waiver from that because I was familiar with the case law, and we were most certainly not a lodging house. So why would we ask for a waiver for something that doesn't apply? The same way we wouldn't ask for a waiver for something that applies to a medical facility or something that applies to, uh, so we, you know, we, it doesn't apply.
That's, you know, your premise.
Right.
I just wanted to, I just wanna make sure that, that
Moreover, we
We're saying we gave any kind of waivers to that, because
No, I'm not saying you
My recollection, we did not.
I, I'm not saying you granted a waiver specifically to that, that bylaw, because, no, you did not. I'll say that for the record, but our, our position clearly is that bylaw does not apply to this development. You know, and I would think, I think the matter of the public record is pretty clear. We submitted a whole plan set that was reviewed and approved by this board, showing the number of bedrooms, showing how the building would be built. It was the basis on which the building permit was issued. No one ever made any issue of it till several months ago, when the inspections department started to raise issues. And we said, you, you've, you've issued a building permit based on these plan sets. You've, you've, you've given us multiple iterative inspections, and then all of a sudden, you know, it's becoming an issue, which was a huge surprise to us for the, once again, the lease clause, which we clearly said bedrooms would be rented to two or more, to unrelated people. And the fact that the plan set was submitted, you know, showing how the bedrooms and the, the units would be constructed, which was reviewed and approved by multiple departments of this town.
When you came back before the board in July, I believe it was July fifteenth of two thousand and nineteen, with the insubstantial change, the request for an insubstantial change, uh, as you just stated, you submitted the plan set. Did you draw it to the board's attention? Is your memory that you drew it to the board's attention that there would be this change in the plan?
Um, well, we, I have the letter. I mean, I could read to you the letter that we submitted as part of the insubstantial change, but the, I mean, the board found it was an insubstantial change by the fact that you approved it.
My question to you is, if you bring it to the board's attention, this change in the plans?
Because, alright, and just to go one step further, you brought two things to the board's attention and brought it out, and one of them was something to hook in with the, the water. Memory's not the best on it, was the, the drain, drainage going into town drainage? Excuse me, can you go to the microphone, please? What, whatever, whatever, it, it may have not been July nineteenth, I don't, I don't remember exactly, but I do remember the case where the, the date that you did come before us, and you had two things on that you brought up. Then you said, and, and I asked the questions, are there anything else? Is there anything else that we need to know about? And you said, no, just some insubstantial changes.
But by the, yes, by the, by the definition of the law, the number of units did not change. There was nothing that, that is deemed a substantial change in accordance to forty B regulations.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that's your position.
But the same way, we didn't tell you about changes to our kitchens or our bathrooms or things in the lobby. Things interior to the building are not substantial changes by the definition of the regulations. So, and we submitted the plan set, which the board reviewed and approved.
You, you absolutely did. I did get an eight-by-eleven plan set, and I looked at it. And that, that night, I, you know, I didn't have my magnifying glass with me on the time, at the time.
Well, it was
Until later that I did see the actual, what you deemed to be, and, and again, that's your definition of insubstantial.
No, it's not my definition, it's the state's definition. It's not my definition. Let's make that distinction. This, the, the state under forty B is very clear, what's substantial and what's insubstantial. And nothing we submitted was substantial, nothing, and not even, he, he, if, if I was to take your argument, what you're saying is substantial relative to the change in bedrooms, which I would say was always the intention, is not substantial.
Always the intention, was that, why was then the original plans provided to this board?
Because
Did not have that?
Because the original plans provided to this board were produced by some architect that the previous owner had retained, who, you know, didn't know what they were doing. So we corrected it, we designed a wonderful building, we submitted it to the board, who had every opportunity to review or ask questions or push back, none of which happened. And by the way, we submitted it electronically too, not, you know, just as you represented. So that, that's our position, so.
Do you have anything else? Jerry?
Would you be open to a site walk for the members?
Yeah, I mean, if you want, it's a, it's a, it's a building we could show, but, I mean, is that gonna delay action by this board, or what's?
Of course it would. Why would we ask for it?
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna see the property, we'd be happy to show it to you.
Um, I just wanna jump back to the insubstantial versus substantial. And I, I'm aware that the state has definitions, however, the reason you come before this board is for us to decide whether we deem it insubstantial or substantial. And then if you disagree with our decision, you then are allowed to go back to the state and appeal it, and the state will decide. So I, I think you're a little bit vague with the way you're describing that and just putting it to the state. You do come before this board.
We, we agree, certainly, we, I a hundred percent agree. We submitted our plans to this board, and the board had the right to say, no, we don't think this is insubstantial, we think this is substantial. We are going to publicly notice it, and we are gonna hold a public hearing. This board had every opportunity to do that. For whatever reason that this, this board knows or others, you elected not to do that. But that, don't put that on me, that, that was not our directive. Frequently, we, we submit things to other zoning boards that are insubstantial, and they say, yeah, you know, we reviewed it, we wanna have a public hearing, we, we disagree. The board, this board had every opportunity to do that, you chose not to. So that, that's not on us, that's what the board elected to do.
And, Mr. Chipman, if I may?
Was your, um, your statement that it's, it's the state that, that describes substantial and substantial. And it does come before, but I'm going back to Chairman's point about your presentation and your statement of
Can I read, and then I'll turn it over to counsel. Here is what generally constitutes a substantial change. An increase in more than ten percent of the height of the building, we didn't do that. An increase in more than ten percent in the number of units, the number of units did not change. A reduction in the size of the site of more than ten percent in excess of any decrease in the number of housing units proposed, we obviously didn't do that. A change in the building type, in other words, moving from apartment to condo, clearly, we did not do that. Um, those are what, what constitute a substantial change. Then there's other things that are given as examples that do not constitute a substantial change, which we believe this, mind you, there were other changes in the plans, subtle relative to the interior of the building, but things that we did because we thought it was an improvement. Nobody made an issue of that, nobody's, we're not discussing any of that this evening. Those, so it was all considered under the same application and the same letter.
And if I may, just address your, your one comment that you had made relative to the
I'm sorry, can we just have your name in for the record, please?
Pardon me, Stephanie Kiefer from Smolak and Vaughn, thank you. Um, Mr. Chipman and members of the board, the, um, um, just to kind of follow through on, on your one point there relative to the developers' request for an insubstantial change, it's, it's just that it's a request. And it was submitted to the board that there, there were two components of it. The one was the, the changing of the permit to SLV, um, rather than the Scully Development, who had been the original developer. And then the second one was the submission of the updated architectural plans, um, which it, it notes is consistent with the board's decision. Um, there also had been, if you recall, there had been a commercial component to the project when it was initially presented. Um, and then there were, you know, the residential above that. So there were a, a number of, you know, um, updates to the plan. Um, it was presented to the board, the full set of the plans. There's no requirement when, once submitting a, a notice of, you know, insubstantial change or proposed insubstantial change, that they have to submit a full set. The applicant submitted the full set of the cube-three architectural plans, noted that there were interior and exterior changes. Now, under chapter forty B, the board is required, and I mean required, within twenty days to determine whether it is substantial or an insubstantial. And as you mentioned, if the board deems that it to be substantial, the course is, if the applicant doesn't object, it's then scheduled for a public hearing, and a public hearing is, um, is, is held on the proposed change. If the applicant objects, they have the option to challenge that to the Housing Appeals Committee to, to say, we think it's an insubstantial change, and then the Housing Appeals Committee weighs in at that point. Here, what happened was the applicant submitted its request for an insubstantial change. The board did not act within twenty days. And so, under law, the plan, the permit is deemed modified. That's the law, that's, that's nothing to do with anything. The board had twenty days. But the applicant, you know, as he said, he's worked with this board for a while, didn't want to push that in your face, that the twenty days had expired with the board failing to take action. The applicant came back for a meeting with the board, and prior to that meeting, the board apparently had some questions that they transmitted through their secretary or their administrative assistant, who reached out to Jeff and said, the board wants to see, and they were very specific questions that the board had. So the board must have looked at the plans because they had very specific questions, but they were all related to looking at an overlay of what was approved and the footprint of what it was. The email exchange documents that it was provided, that, that, that the request was, would, would have to be produced, wasn't even a document. So the applicant went back, provided that, gave it to the board, then said to the secretary or the, the, the admin, is there anything else that the board is looking for? The answer to that, no. So this was not an instance of the developer playing hide the ball. This was an instance of the developer coming to the board, submitting the request, submitting a twelve-sheet set of plans, and the board, more than twenty days, looked at it, asked for feedback, looked at it again, and then said, we deem it an insubstantial change. That, I think that is the complete history that needs to be recognized here. And on that note, I'm also going to point back to the comprehensive permit as originally issued. Condition A one, and I believe it's in Attorney Pithy's letter, but condition A one of the comp permit, it approved the fifty-eight multifamily unit housing. And it had two conditions as to kind of the internal size of it, if you will. And that was the total number of units and the total number of bedrooms. Fifty-eight units, no more than one twelve bedrooms, nothing further. If there had been any concern, it should have been and normally would have been within that. But even more telling is condition B one, that's the general conditions of the comp permit. And then the board there states that the, that the, um, project shall be constructed in accordance with the plans of record. By this board's actions, the cube-three architectural plans are in fact the plans of record, and the project has been built in accordance with those. Building permits were issued, you know, based on those plans, interim inspections were conducted pursuant to that. Um, this is a little bit of revisionist history to say that the project wasn't constructed in accordance with those plans. That is your comprehensive permit that you issued, that is the master permit of this project.
I don't think anybody on this board said that, that this project
The decision says that.
What, the decision says?
Oh, I'm sorry, no one on this board said that wasn't
I, I don't know who here, which decision you're saying it wasn't, where is it saying that it wasn't constructed based upon the plans?
The building inspector's issuance.
Right, and, and I don't think anybody here is, is arguing that it wasn't built according to the plans. That's not what we're here about. You, oh, you did build it to the plans, that's, that's
That's correct, the plans that were approved, the plans of record. And, and further within that condition B one, um, the, the second sentence of that condition states, unless expressly waived herein or as provided on the approved plans referenced herein. And so even if the board agrees with the building inspector, that this would be a lodging house, which we vehemently disagree with. The fact that the board's decision states that if it required a waiver and it was shown on the plans, it's waived.
What, I, I still have no clue where you're getting at here.
I, I'm, I'm referencing condition B one, the second sentence
I understand what you're doing, but what, what do you try, what point are you trying to make in relation to that?
The, the point is that if the board were to agree with Mr. Solari, that the lodging house statute, or bylaw, pardon me, applied, the decision itself says that the applicant is to comply unless it's waived or as provided on the approved plans. And the project was constructed as provided in accordance with the approved plans.
So how do you take the leap from the fact that it, it was built with this, with the same number of bedrooms and that, that our, should we go along with Mr. Solari's to cease, cease and desist that, that, that that approval says that it's not a lodging house?
Because the, the plans of record themselves, which are those plans that are before you now, have the tables on them designating the units, the number of units, the number of beds per unit, it's, it's all right there.
Okay.
So, so if the plans of record are in fact the applicable document.
That's, that, that's not the issue. The issue isn't that you have more beds, it's who you're renting them to. That's, the, the issue is you're in violation, according to Mr. Solari's thing, in violation of the zone, the zoning bylaw in relation to renting them to more than three people of the same kindred. You go to the microphone, Jeff, just a second.
I, I understand.
The board's not contesting that we, they approved two-hundred-and-twenty-two beds. They're contesting that, who we rented to. And they're saying that we're, you know, we're, the, the lodging house bylaw, I mean, I'm not, they haven't come to that conclusion, but, Mr. Chairman, is that fair to say you're not contesting with anything that's been built? You're not contested with the number of bedrooms or anything?
To your point, we approved the plans, you submitted them, and we approved them.
Mm-hmm.
There is no, you know, the fact that you have bedrooms, you know, and again, I'll go back to, you know, you, you handed out the little, uh, part about, you know, that they could be a bedroom. Uh, purpose may not, uh, we're, all units in the building are intended for use as residential apartments. Is intended only for residential purposes, but not more than one family unit nor more than two unrelated persons per bedroom. That's fine. Per bedroom, but if you're still in violation because you rent a four, a two-bedroom apartment to four individuals, you're still in violation, that the, the, the fact that you say you, you could do it, okay, well, you could rent one to two unrelated people, and the others could be related to one.
So, so can I ask a question? Um, is every four-bedroom building in Bridgewater a lodging house? If it has four unrelated people?
To my understanding, every four-bedroom up, building, dwelling, dwelling in, in Bridgewater, if rented to unrelated people, if all the people that it's rented to are unrelated, the four, then that would be in violation. I mean, that's why they put the bylaw
Alright, well, I find that interesting, because, you know, there, there's probably seven houses on our street that have four unrelated people and two and three-bedroom units, that, I mean, but
Well, that, that The key there, though, is the, the, the zoning bylaw says more than four persons of, not within the second degree of kindred, not of one another, but of the legal owner of the premises. So that, that's a big distinction, Mr. Chairman, because the, under the, under your read of the zoning house bylaw, then the only the, under the, under your read of the zoning house bylaw, then the only way you could have that four-bedroom home occupied by four persons would be if those four persons were related to the owner of the property. So, and I would submit that, 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 that's not the way that the law reads. It's not what a lodging house is. You know, when the case, when you look at the case and the history of where lodging house, the lodging house restrictions came from, it, it arose out of the sixties and this idea of free love and all these kids living and, you know, various folks living in houses and that's, that's not, I would submit that, that's not what's happening here. Okay? What's happening here is that this is, it's their tenants. These folks are tenants. They, they all sign a lease. They all have an obligation to the owner of the property, and they all will have the access to the entirety of that unit. They're not lodgers. A lodger by the very nature of the definition, as it exists in the dictionary, as it exists in our statutes, as it exists in your bylaw, is not somebody that has a lease, not somebody that's a tenant, it's somebody that rents a room. And that's not what these people are doing. They're not renting rooms.
So, again, I think this bylaw exists in the town of Bridgewater, correct? And this bylaw about no more than two unrelated people exists. And so it's your position that, that that you did not need to apply for a waiver for that because it was not a lodging house?
Correct.
Correct. And, but yet your position is also that based on general conditions B one, that it was, that, that it was waived because we approved the plans. Is that what I'm understanding?
No, the, the part about that you waived it, no. We're not, we're not saying that this zoning board waived that bylaw. We're saying the bylaw does not apply. The same way the zoning bylaws in town, there's probably, I don't know how many there are, several hundred that have no relevance to this building. This is not a lodging house. We did not ask for waivers that, as I said, that are applicable to a medical facility, that are applicable to a drugstore, because we're neither of those. We're not a lodging house for reasons my counsel just explained.
But my question, I guess, to you, ma'am, because that was your point. I think that you were laboring with Mr. Chairman about general conditions B one, where you read the language back to us, unless expressly waived hereunder or as provided on the approved plans referenced here. And then because it was referenced in the plan, is it your position that therefore we somehow gave you a variance to this bylaw?
My position was that it is not subject to the lodging house, but if the board were to even consider that, it, it is, look at the board's decision. It says that it's subject to the plans. And so, no, I was not saying that we required a waiver. I'm saying if the board were to even consider the building inspector's position, I'm, I'm sorry if I, I confused you on that point.
No, I think, not that we required a waiver, but that it was essentially waived by our action of approving the plans.
Again, it's, it's, we are not, it is not a lodging house in, in accordance with the City of Worcester, the SJC. If the board were to have considered Mr. Solari's position or to consider it, they also are obliged to consider that they expressly understood that the project was available to have two units per, or two bedrooms per bedroom within the. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I want to just go back to the lease clause and your, if you have a four-bedroom unit, your intent is to lease to four people, related or not, correct?
We don't have a four-bedroom unit. The largest units that we have are the three-bedrooms.
Okay.
Yeah.
So go back to a three-bed.
Right.
Your, your intent is to lease to three people. And that.
We, we have the, I can, we have, we provide an option for people to share a room. Yes, we do. A, a lot of people are not choosing to do that. They're renting a single room. So, once again, you know, we will have rooms with four unrelated people. We'll have lots of room, every two-bedroom, every one-bedroom will have two or a few people. We'll have fifteen affordable units that won't meet the lodging house, and we'll have some two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms that don't. But we'll have a few units that do. So, I, I, I'm, I'm not a lawyer. I defer to my counsel. But you can't be a lodging house when a, an abundance of the units. I mean, we don't think we're a lodging house regardless, even if we have four unrelated people in every unit. But we don't, but we can't be a lodging house if the, an abundance of our units don't even meet the, the definition.
Let me just go back, Jeff, to, so take a three-bedroom unit. Are you leasing these furnished, correct?
Yes.
How many beds are in a three-bedroom unit?
Six.
Six, okay. So you're leasing a three-bedroom unit to potentially, at max, six individuals.
Cor- correct.
And.
Could be. It could be family. It could be whatever, but yes.
Let me just take.
Okay, sorry.
Where I'm going. So potentially, it could be six individuals, and you will have six individual leases.
Yes.
And not one
No.
particular person who's responsible.
Nope. They all will have individual leases. They all have off-financial and legal obligations under those leases. As my counsel said, they're all twelve-month. I think in our permit, we were allowed six-month leases. They're all twelve-month, long-term leases. But everybody has an individual lease, whether you come by yourself, whether you come with a friend. Everybody is executing an individual lease.
Okay. So, and, and then they have a living room, kitchen.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, so all have access to that?
Yeah. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Access.
All have access. We don't have an abundance of common areas, but there's a lobby and some televisions and coffee and tables and.
Similar to a dorm.
Bathroom.
Similar to a dorm.
Well, I'm not sure what the, I'm not familiar with Bridgewater State's dorms, but.
Well, you went to college.
Yeah, we didn't have in my dorm what we're providing to these students, so.
Well, we, we know what dorms are.
Okay.
So, so you, you've got six people, potentially, six different leases. What's to prevent someone from skipping on their lease? So let's just say someone, you've got six students in there.
Yep.
Two of them don't make the cut, and they leave. Now, as a landlord, you have your, your ways of chasing them, but you're going to try to backfill those two spots as fast as you possibly can, while maybe you pursue the two that left. And in that situation, you're, you're leasing beds.
No, we're not.
Which doesn't make you much different than a B and B.
No, we're not doing that. I mean, we'll provide you with the lease, but we're not leasing beds. We're leasing a unit in its entirety, and the, the, the resident or the person executing that lease has rights under that lease. But the same way, if I rented a studio and I was by myself and I hopped down, a landlord has legal recourse against somebody that's violating their lease. Everybody in this building will have an individual lease. So how many people in a unit, it's irrelevant. It's what are the terms of the lease? They have guarantors, there's other obligations that they have to fulfill. So we have the same recourse that somebody, a single person renting a one-bedroom has. It's no different.
So if the number of people is irrelevant, then if, if you have un, un, unrelated people, then why not just rent to three? If, but you've got six bedrooms in there, so you are renting.
No, we don't have six beds.
Beds.
Correct. Right.
All right. You just said you weren't.
No, I.
We're not renting bedrooms. We're, we're trying to fill bed, we're trying to fill the rooms with as many as we are obligated to do, as many as we have the, or were permitted to do, which would be six people in a three-bedroom.
Right.
Which would be four in a two, but, but we also will rent to a two to two people, and we'll rent to three to three people.
Obviously, relative to the rent, you know, it doesn't take a genius to figure out that if we, if somebody wants an individual room, it's more expensive on a per-person basis than sharing a room. And, you know, students, young perfect, we have young professionals that are sharing a room that are not students. So there's financial considerations that people have, you know, the same way if I'm renting a two-family in town, I have different options or considerations. So, but what we're offering is not in violation of any building codes. It's not in violation of any health codes, and it's certainly not in violation in our position of the lodging house provision, which I think we've spent, you know, the last half hour talking about with, with this board. We strongly believe does not apply, and we believe the case law supports our position. So, you know, that, that's basically the, the crux of the argument.
Well, Airbnbs, you realize rent.
It's not, it's not an Airbnb. We rent.
Let me finish. I'm, I'm not calling it an Airbnb. What I'm saying is Airbnb's rent to professionals, rent to students, rent to people who need to be in a certain place for whatever reason, not just vacations, but for all sorts of reasons. And they're very, very popular. And I'm sure you read the news. The city of Boston's really going crazy trying to develop regulations. And I'm not saying you are, but you certainly resemble, certainly resemble a B and B, but I understand.
A B and B and an Airbnb and VRBOs and the like, that, that is not us. I mean, we have, those are all short-term rentals. There are different laws and different regulations that they have to adhere to. All of our tenants or all our residents have to sign an individual lease. All those leases are twelve months. I mean, it's, 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 you know, no different than the Claremont property in Belmont. I mean, and, and, you know, in the other part of Bridgewater, relative to, you know, those leases and the like. It's just we're, we're catering to a different customer base.
I, I think, I think I'm, I'm all set with that. So walk me through, Jeff, what a, an affordable unit will be when you rent it? Will you rent it the same way, say?
We'll rent it this, no, first of all, you keep saying. The affordable units will be rented the same way any other forty B in Bridgewater has been approved. The same way. There's an affirmative marketing plan that we work closely with the town on, and the rent, the, the units are rented per household. It's very different than the market rate units.
So just, can you describe that? When you say a household, tell me, tell me, tell me who rents an affordable unit? What, what, what is the makeup of the, the?
Well, it could.
The renter. Do the affordable units have individual leases?
No, the, the affordable.
Walk me through that whole thing.
Well, this is not my, respectfully, not my area of expertise. We hire my brother and his firm to handle this, but.
Come on, Jeff, you've been doing this forever. You know what's.
Not this part. I don't. A house.
You're a very smart guy. You've been, I've been with you throughout.
Would you ra, well, let me ask you a question. Would I, would you rather I provide some speculation? Or would you rather I give you exact answers? Because I can tell you how I think everything happens. I'm not going to tell you it's a hundred percent correct, but basically, it's rented to a household. And a household can be one person, it can be two people, it can be three people, it cannot be unrelated people. So it would be, I think, more conventional to what this board of a family or a couple or a couple with a young child. It cannot be, you know, rented to into, like, individual people that don't know each other or friends. That, that is not how.
They had, if there were three people in the family and they wanted a three-bedroom.
It depends. That, that, well, the prices on affordable units are set by the number of bedrooms, not the number of occupants. So a one-bedroom occupied by one person is the same price as a one-bedroom occupied by two people. Same applies to a two-bedroom, if you have two people, three people or four people. Relative to the applicant pool, if you don't have anybody, and, and I'm getting a little over my skis here, but the priority is given to bigger households in terms of the availability of units. But once you exhaust the, you know, the original list of, of applicants, then, you know, a two, a two-person household could rent a two-bedroom unit. Whereas if you had an abundance of applicants, the priority would be to larger households, to a household with three or four people. We have a lot of households that have expressed interest and are ready to sign a lease, but frankly, have not provided all the necessary documentation to my brother's company that they can successfully say they comply with the guidelines. Thus, we only have five executed leases. We have a lot of interested households, but that's where we are in the process. So I don't know if I answered your question. Hopefully, I gave some helpful information, but it's, it's a different, I mean, it's just a different process than our, our forty-three market rate units. The affordable lease-up of this building is consistent with your other rental forty Bs. There's an affirmative marketing plan. There's a sixty-day marketing period. There's an application intake. It goes through the, the, the process. They're all screened. They're screened for program eligibility. They're screened for income eligibility. If they meet those criteria, only then can they sign a lease.
But the units themselves are identical. They're furnished, identical.
Yeah, they're indistinguishable from, if you walk down the hall, you're not going to be able to tell.
Renting to a family and for argument's sake, let's say a traditional family with a mother and father and say two kids, and they want a two-bedroom apartment. When they come there, the mother and father are going to have separate beds, right?
They don't need, they don't have to. I mean, if they want to, you know, share a bed. We, we've designed it to have individual bedrooms, but it doesn't, or individual beds, but it doesn't have to.
But you provided the beds.
Right.
So were they, they like queen beds or are they smaller?
I think they're full.
So they could decide to stay together in a.
Yeah, yeah. We're not going to split a married couple up because we have that option.
I have a king bed, and I think it's not big enough.
Right, sure. No, but yeah, of course. I mean, people that want to share a bed will share a bed. I mean.
So that is, it's safe to say, if I'm understanding you correctly, every affordable unit will consist of a household and one lease only.
Yes.
Okay. So that, that answers that. So that, that solves my concern as far as meeting census and whether or not you truly are affordable. So as long as all those units are, are that way, I'm fine with those. So it brings me back then to, and, and I think if, if, if we could rewrite the lodging bylaw, maybe we wouldn't call it a lodging house. That's kind of a misnomer because an apartment, as you, you know, while you stated, you think there are some on your street that rent to more than three unrelated persons, et cetera, and, and meet that. But if we could just look at it from the standpoint that the, the renting to six individuals in a three-bedroom unit doesn't strike you as having something very close to a violation of our bylaw, if not.
No, it, it does not strike me as something close because I was aware of the case law and I'm aware of what's allowed under code. So no, it doesn't, if I thought it applied, I would have asked for a waiver during our original permitting process. So obviously, I don't think it applies. So, you know, I don't know, you know, what, I mean, it's what else to say. And also, I will say that this board needs to enforce or interpret the bylaw as written, not as it should have been written or not as what was intended. You're, you're stuck with the flaws in that bylaw as it's written, which has holes a mile wide, which, you know, we hope we don't have to, you know, move this beyond this hearing tonight, but we will. But, I mean, as my counsel said, if it was interpreted as written, there, pretty much almost every multifamily in this town is a lodging house. And so it's, it's crazy, and it's inconsistently applied and all sorts of other things. We don't have to get into that tonight. But we will get into it if, you know, the board finds, you know, and it denies our appeal. So I don't know if you have any other questions for me, but.
Well, I just wanted, just to be clear, I, I was not saying what we could have done or should have done. I, I was only saying that for the purposes of this meeting, maybe the, the lodging name is a misnomer on the bylaw. But what we're talking about is apartment units and how many people can be there. And, and, and whether or not there's one person on a lease or six people on a lease. And, you know, I, I, I'm getting old, and maybe I forgot, but I just don't recall three-bedroom units were going to have six beds in them through our process, Jeff, and and on down the line with twos and ones and et cetera. And, and I just, I'm sorry, I can't get past, I believe you're renting beds and not units. And we can pass words, but like I said, if two of your people leave, and I know your brother runs that side of the business, but if two tenants, I mean, let's face it, you're renting to students, we'll say, just in one particular unit, they leave, you need to fill the beds.
We don't, first of all, my brother, my brother rents, runs the affordable side. What you're talking about is the market.
I see, I'm sorry.
And which, which, which we're responsible for along with our property manager. But I fail to understand the concern because everybody has their own lease. So I go back to my point, if there was a one bedroom with one person and they hopped out on the lease, yeah, we would try to fill that unit. The same way if somebody violate, you know, leaves their, their, is in violation of their lease. So I don't understand why that's seen as a negative. It's the same way every landlord in Bridgewater, the Commonwealth or the state of or the United States, if they have somebody that has a lease and they hop out on it, why wouldn't you try to fill that spot?
There's actually a legal obligation on landlords to mitigate their damages. And if we were to pursue that tenant that vacated and that tenant were able to demonstrate to a court of law that we did not engage in steps to mitigate our damages, i.e. try to rent the apartment to someone else to get somebody else in there, we would be subject to, they would have a very good argument before the court to say they're not going to pay that 11 months balance on the lease because we didn't do anything to try to do it. The other thing I would just add is that these are, if we're talking about the students example, okay, and a couple of students drop out of school, one month into school, do you really think that there's a market for us to find somebody else to move into those units at that point in time? Because everybody's got a house. It's just like everybody that signed leases with us, they signed 12 month leases and other students have agreed to be, you know, to pay room and board through the Bridgewater State campus. It's not like it's that automatic that we can all of a sudden go out and find somebody to pop in there. It's, that's a process in and of itself.
I understand all of that. I'm just, I just wanted to be on the record that that if you, if you've got a three bedroom unit, you're renting six beds. There are six beds in there and six people will sleep in those beds.
Not necessarily. It's a possible.
Okay, potentially, possible at max, but it has the maximum potential. And I guess my last thing would be, obviously the students are your market primarily, it would appear to me. How does that fit with families in the same building? Trying to raise children, whatever. I mean, we know what students do. How does that?
First of all, I mean, respectfully, I'm not sure what that has to do with our discussion, but listen, this is a professionally managed building. These students or, or young professionals or whomever is, is going to reside here is paying money and has obligations under the lease. So if people are misbehaving or doing something in violation, we're going to evict them. People have, on the market side and the affordable side, have choices, all right? If they're not happy living there, they're not going to renew their lease. Or if they understand that there are going to be some students, they don't have to rent with us, both on the affordable side and the market side. Nobody is obligated to be in.
Can you hear us, Jennifer? She's trying to figure out.
Yeah, I can. The recording stopped. I just started it up again.
My computer died. Are you okay to keep going and I'll get one second?
Yep, yep, they can keep going.
Sorry about that. I didn't realize it was getting low.
Yep, you can keep going.
You guys are all set.
One more question. So of the affordable, I think you said of the 15 affordable, five released, how many of the three bedrooms have been leased and in what capacity?
We only, well, first of all, we only have five three bedrooms, I think, or no, six. And I think one or two of them is affordable. I don't think either of those have leased. And on the market side, maybe two. I don't know the makeup of those units. We could find that out and provide it to the board. I mean, but the other, the other thing I want to rent, mention is yes, we have students here, but the profile of the renter is irrelevant. What if we had, you know, 120 young professionals or 200 young professionals? Or what if we had 200 old, old people that lived? It has nothing to do with that.
Nothing to do with it.
Right, okay, all right.
Absolutely nothing.
That was just, and I only do use that as an example.
Right. And then the other thing is, you know, and I don't want to belabor this point, but the people that are, that are renting here, I think there's like 26 or 27 documents that they need to sign relative to what their responsibilities are, what our expectations are of them, what their financial obligations are, what their obligations are to other people in the property. It's extensive and rigorous. This isn't a one pager, you know, come on in. This is, you know, people are, you know, we have, it's rigorous, trust me. So there's going to be a level of expectation and professionalism at this building, which, you know, honestly, compared to walk down our street and look at the other, other residences on Borough Ave. Okay, and, and, and tell me which you think is more likely to have issues. I mean, that's subjective and anecdotal and it has nothing to do with what we're talking about. But walk down and, you know, sort of single us out relative to, oh, you're going to have a, could have a bunch of students. Yeah. But guess what? So is every other unit, which is neglected and awful on our street, but, you know, yet somehow we're being, you know, held to a different standard.
Do, do we have anybody? Well, first I'd like to read into record a letter that the board received. Stated August 10th, Mr. Brian Heath, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals, Town of Bridgewater. Dear Mr. Heath and ZBA members, I'm writing to you in regards to 85 Plymouth Street Project, aka Dwell 85. Please read this correspondence into the record during the zoning board public meeting on August 11th, 2021. It's my understanding that a cease and desist order dated June 16th, 2021 had been issued on the project by Mr. Stephen Solari, Inspector of Buildings, Zoning Enforcement Officer. I respectfully request that you give greater consideration to upholding the cease and desist order that was issued. My opinion is based upon the following. It's important that the integrity of the 40B permitting be maintained. While 85 is leasing beds, not in entire units, if there are six tenants in a unit, there are six individual leases and one lease, lease for each bed. Answers to leasing questions directed to the leasing office make it clear that the property is intended for college students. Dorm style facility is not harmonious to families that are, that may have obtained a 40B lease for an apartment unit within the building. On site parking is insufficient to support the number of individual beds that are being leased. In their application, the developer stated, all units in the building are intended for use as residential apartments. Leasing beds has dramatically changed the concept of the project. If allowed, this establishes a precedent that may leave the Town of Bridgewater open to litigation from others who may have suffered financial losses to the enforcement of their town's current lodging boarding housing requirement. Number of beds indicated on a floor plan for each unit type should not be the point of contention. In a residential apartment occupied by a family, it is conceivable that a family could have multiple beds in each bedroom, even multiple sets of bunk beds based on the size of their family. Simply indicating multiple beds or half walls on a floor plan does not provide the Town of Bridgewater with an accurate picture of the intended use of the property. I urge you to exercise your authority in upholding the cease and desist until such time as a developer returns to a true apartment complex or brings the project up to standard to meet the safety and security requirements acquired under the lodging boarding house licensure of the Town of Bridgewater sincerely, Donna Jewell. C.C. Jay Burke, M. Dutton, S. Solari sent me an email. Again, read into the record for that. Do we have any, anybody in the audience that either here currently or on Zoom that would like to make any comments?
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a suggestion to try to make this orderly? Why don't you take any comments in the room first and then we'll take comments from those who are remote so that we do it in orderly fashion?
Okay, we have two people. Do we have anybody who wants to make a comment? Internally. Did you come up to there? And please just state your name for the record and where you live.
Enid Kaplowski, Foxbury, Massachusetts. I was just curious, were they putting in a playground that was initially discussed for these families that were going to have children? Was that a previous plan?
There is a play area. I'm sorry, there is a play area on the other side of where your building's located. On the other side, there's a play area.
Oh, there is? Okay, I didn't notice that. One other quick question. Do they just supposed to enter 85 Dwell just from Plymouth Street or from Borough Avenue? I noticed people are driving in from Borough Avenue now. Because initially they were just supposed to enter from Plymouth Street and exit.
There are two entrances. There's one on Plymouth Street, which is a one way in, and on Borough Ave, there is one in and one out.
Okay, so that must have been something that changed initially, because initially you were just going to enter through Plymouth Street and then only exit through Borough was what I thought.
No, it was always, there was two entrances.
Was it two? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
I think that what we did though, didn't we change it that it was supposed to be an exit at Plymouth as well? And we got rid of that because of the traffic.
Well, the exit on Borough Ave is a right only. It's supposed to head up toward the college and then go back down and around. And on the, up by the, where the train is, the contractor ended up widening it for the fire department. Fire department had concerns about getting a truck in there. So I don't know if that still stayed as far as the right in or right out, because originally I said it was, I thought it was supposed to be a right in only.
That's what I thought too.
Yeah, but I think with the fire department needing to get their trucks in there, they had to widen it and open the, the end of it up.
Okay, so when they exit, they can only take a right. They cannot take a left to go onto Plymouth Street. That's correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted that clarified. Thank you.
Okay, I think we've hit everybody that's here that wanted to make a comment. So if we have anybody in the audience, please.
Yeah, raise your hand or enter a chat. I don't see anybody with their hands raised and I don't have a chat. Nicole, I don't know if you have a chat.
I don't see anything either.
If there, if there are no more comments from the public, then I'd request a motion to close the public comment section of this. So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, then what I'd request is a motion from one of the board members to either uphold Mr. Solari's cease and desist or to overturn it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to support Mr. Solari's cease and desist. It was, it was done, obviously not arbitrarily and with consultation with legal counsel. And I, in discussion with counsel, our counsel, the Worcester versus Bonaventura was under mass, I believe the appeal was on the chapter 140, section 122. And I'm of the understanding, and maybe I'm not fully clear, that because we do have a bylaw, chapter 140, would not possibly would not pertain to the Town of Bridgewater. So with that said, I would like to make a motion to support Mr. Solari's cease and desist.
Second?
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Cease and desist will be upheld. Minutes. We will close the public. Make a motion to close the public hearing. So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the minutes from the last board meeting.
So move to approve the minutes of July 14th, 2021.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, minutes. Thank you. Minutes as drafted and written for the July 14th, 2021 meeting, zoning board of appeals have been approved. Motion to adjourn the meeting. Do we have anything on the director's report, Jen?
No, not tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting of the Board of, Zoning Board of Appeals is hereby adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.